So much to see and do in Grants. Parks provide relaxation for picnics and athletic events. Creative activities abound at the senior citizen center. The new animal shelter is a state-of-the-art facility for our lost pets. Grants is home to the Mount Taylor Quad, Fire Nice Bike Rally, Fourth of July Rodeo, and so much more. Grants, the gateway to outdoor adventures, sightseeing, hunting, hiking, biking, and riding. Grants, where ancient and modern civilizations meet. Grants, a great place to live.
Hi, in Grants, New Mexico. We ask that you grant us wisdom to make good choices for the entire community and not special interest groups. We ask that you bless and watch over all the families of the shooting in Oronbro, Florida. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Mayor Phil Tenlis?
Here.
Council Dickens?
Here.
Council Vasquez?
Here.
Council Rumpf?
Here.
Six o'clock. Straight up. Good time. Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah! Who will be the agenda?
I'll make a motion to your president, Yungba.
A second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez is?
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues? Here. Yes. Citizens to address the council. Johnny, you're up. You want to bring your whole entourage with you?
Absolutely. Good evening, mayor, councilors. My name is Dan Darnell. I live at 6844 Augusta Hills Drive in Rio Rancho. And this is our district manager, Dustin Maxwell. And of course, you all know Johnny Ferreira, who is the route manager here in Grants. And I just thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I've been with Waste Management for about three months. Prior to that, I was a 30-year retired law enforcement officer. And also, I served three terms on the Farmington City Council. And as soon as I got done with my last term, then I moved south so I could be near my grandkids. And I ended up going to work for Waste Management. So I've only been there about three months, and I'm just trying to make the rounds. I have the whole state of New Mexico trying to make the rounds and introduce myself to all of those who's using our service. And so, I just wanted to just let you know who I am. I know Dustin has a word or two, but these guys are both in the operations end. I'm on the public sector end. Public sector is the one that actually works with our municipalities and local governments. I think from my background as a staff member and my background in municipal government as a policymaker, I think I'm poised to really kind of understand what municipal governments and county governments are dealing with and their struggles. And so, I'm here for you guys. And I left my cards up there on the table, so please use those. Call me if you have any issues whatsoever. We do have boots on the ground. Inform Johnny. He's here, and he'll make sure that you get everything taken care of. But let me know how it's going. I'll be popping in to Ms. Armio periodically. I've been over here, I think, five times in the last three months. So I like Grants. You've got a wonderful little community, and I appreciate it.
Dan was real helpful in letting us know about a small grant that is available through Waste Management. And I put in an application, and we were, we should be awarded $2,000 for, I applied for money to do cleanup on our exits and entrance into town where people are stopping and just throwing trash. So we're going to do some cleanup with that money and put some trash cans there, encourage people to put their trash in the trash cans. But thank you for giving us that information.
Yeah, no, it's my pleasure.
My pleasure.
Dustin, do you have something? Yeah, just real briefly. My name's Dustin Maxwell. I'm the district manager for northern New Mexico. Hello, I'm in Farmington. Grants kind of falls into my purview. Johnny's really the go-to guy. I mean, I'd be more than happy to assist when and where I can. I'm the guy, when he needs a hand, he calls me up. You know, we have trucks go down here, okay? It's transportation. It happens. I have resources up in Farmington that I'm more than happy, and actually pulled last week to send down here to help get your community services as well. It's just as important. So my background, company for two years. Prior to that, I was a United States Marine. So...
Liked the haircut.
Yeah, thank you. I kind of heard...
I was just telling my fellow councilor here that you don't look open enough to be in the Marine Corps, unless less.
Yeah.
Do you want you to do it now?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I heard the little hurrah, so I figured I'd throw that in there. But yeah, so I got out two years ago, came on with Waste Management. And yeah, happy to be here, happy to serve you guys, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny, we know you were...
Yes.
...in the air, Austin?
Yes, sir. No, we, you know, just appreciate the time, Mayor Hicks, of being able to come in here and meet you folks. You know, it's with great pleasure to serve you all in the community out here. Work closely with, you know, Ms. Armio's office, Melissa and Eileen, Kalina. Anything that you all need, I am a phone call away, and I can make visits often. So, you know, we'll continue to do what we need to do to get the citizens of Grants service. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, guys. Jack?
Oh. Mr. Mayor and the city council, I was wondering how it's going on our billboard for the ROTC?
I'm working on it, and I'm working on an idea where we put a big header placard that would say "Home of," "Grants the Home of." And then, we can add additional things because I suspect if we do something for the ROTC that we need to think about future awards that some of our teams have, that where we could add them below. And that way, we're not trying to add a new sign for every team or group that does something spectacular. So I've got a design ready, and I'll be working with sign effects to get that going.
But we need that one. That is something special. It's better than anything else.
National champions, right, Jack?
Pardon?
National champions, not state champions.
National champions twice and state champions ten times.
Yes.
So I think it deserves a more than its own.
How about some flags? How about a big flag on it?
Okay. And we're having the gala that comes up this weekend. And I give you all a pen, and I'm going to give you an invitation to hear just a minute. And I want to see you there. Y'all haven't been supporting us. It's about time you start. And one other thing. This is the second year in a row that we've won. It's TripAdvisor's Superior Service Certificate of Excellence Award. It's the second time that we've won that.
The mining museum, where it's...
Thank you, Jack. Thank you very much. Face this round, that's in. Thank you.
And Jack, I will not make the gala. And I already told you why. I've got a New Mexico state football player that's graduating.
That excuse is no good.
And he's one of mine that I coached personally up there, got him there, and that's where I'll be Saturday night. Sorry, buddy.
You got to cancel that, and you got to go. I won't accept that excuse. But hey, thank y'all. Thank you very much. Adam, what's going on?
Thanks, Jack. Marcela?
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Marcela Sandoval. I'm with the village of Milan. And I am speaking on behalf of the transit. I worked within the budget that was sent off to Santa Fe. I came up about $5,000 short. So if you're considering the transit, I was requesting $2,150 increase. It would be 52,150. For you, the same for the county, and my percentage would go up accordingly as well. With that, I did eliminate two positions. And I've cut everything to the quicks. So if I can't get this, I cut one more position, and then I'll have money. But we won't have drivers. We'll have, you know, we'll be down to like three drivers, three and a half. So I really would appreciate your help. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny?
Sorry about that.
Mayor, council, I would prefer to wait until the item comes up. And I signed in just in case I wanted to speak, so I would be able to do so.
Bianca?
Good evening, councilors, mayor, Laura. Just wanted to remind you and invite you to the MRA, the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Planning, that we've had today and tomorrow. It begins at 8:00 a.m. at the Sebola Arts Council. We'll be meeting from 8:00 a.m. till about 7:30. The public presentation is at 6:00 p.m. So it would be good if you would attend, and we could get some of that city support. It is in collaboration between the city, the Main Street, and consensus planning. Again, tomorrow, we start at 8:00 a.m. We are handing out surveys to the businesses, a business survey as well as the public survey. So anyone who is in the room, you are all are welcome to attend tomorrow. Again, it's at the Sebola Arts Council. You can come throughout the day and fill out the survey, give your input, your feedback, and consensus planning will gather all that information for the redevelopment area plan for the city of Grants. Thank you.
Thank you. You, too. We're going to a hearing now, and it's an approval of a liquor license. And it is application number 994421 for a new small brewery pub to Round 66 Junkyard. Is there somebody here that would like to speak in reference to this? How you doing?
I'm doing all right.
Better if you open a business in my town.
Well, we're trying to get it open. The tentative opening date would be July 1st, depending on the approval at this hearing.
And you're Henry D. Lackey, right?
I'm Henry D. Lackey.
Yes, for the record. Thank you very much.
And we're going with pushing to get it ready. We've had a couple of issues getting stuff from China. They put some of the stuff metric. So trying to get some of the stuff converted over. Been an issue, but if we're able to start brewing by Wednesday, Thursday, we'll have beer ready for July 1st, and we'll be open. And you know, the community has been great. Every hotel, I mean, every hotel. And the city has lowered their rates in anticipation of people coming in. I went to the golf course to ask them to lower the rates, but only thing he was able to offer at the time was to give the outer towners the grants rate. But I'm asking the city council and the mayor here if you guys could consider just dropping it by a few more bucks from the grants rate. People like to have a discount. They're going to come here, they're going to eat, they're going to drink, they're going to stay in hotels. And if we can get them on the golf course, too, that'd be nice. I'm probably looking about anywhere between 70 and 200 people coming. So I got people coming from Seattle. I got people coming from Hollywood. I got people coming from Tucson. And so, it should be a fun time. Should be a fun weekend.
Questions from the council. Mike, I know you're just happy that it's happening. There it is.
I wish you were across the street.
Danny?
I just think it's great. Great idea. Thank you.
Brittany?
I'm happy for him.
And that notion, anybody else out there want to discuss this on the public hearing? End of this? And then, I'll entertain a motion. I want the motion to move the license plate rotation 994421. Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez? Council Dickens, yes. Council Dues? Yes. On that note, we're out of the public hearing. And before we go into our action and discussion items, we noticed that HEPTRE representative Harry Garcia just walked in. For all of you that have not met him, he is unopposed, and he is our new representative from District 69. And if I could get some help out there to call Kenny Martinez and have him resign that seat now so he can get to work already, that would be really nice. Would you like to say something, Harry?
Sure.
Sooner we get you in there, the better off we are.
Mr. Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen, you know, I appreciate all the support you guys put into me, and I look forward to working while the head of the department and stuff. And I will try to do my best for the county, and we will get together. So I appreciate all the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Public comment and discussion on the charter compliance. Anybody out there want to discuss our charter? Anybody up here want to discuss our charter?
We're in compliance. Thank you.
We are in compliance, right? Everybody agrees?
We are.
Thank you. Hearing special meeting minutes. I wasn't here, so I've got no comments on them.
I've got one comment. I mean, I make a motion to approve it with just one minor change. It was on Roosevelt, not Lobo Canyon for the trees, and it's been taken care of.
Okay. So that's a motion, the second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
Fireworks. Any question on this, guys? It's our annual fireworks show we put on every year.
How much are they asking for?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, same we give in every year. How much? Just the 20 grand from us?
Last year, you guys gave 15. This year, we've secured 5,000 from the county, and that's it. So we're short. The total event takes about 2,100 because we have to buy the sand to fill the boxes to put the fuses in the, to shoot the firework display. So if you could give us 17, 16, that would cover the cost of the event or the firework display.
I approve that we approve the pyrotechnics amount for $16,000.
Second. Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
So Tess, I noticed there's a contract in our packet, and the contract is to the city of Grants. Normally, it looks like we paid the chamber, so it looks like your staff have been signing off on a contract in past years that's under the city of Grants. So I think we need to have it changed to be the Chamber of Commerce or the Mining Museum if you guys are going to sign off on it.
Well, and I think what we can do is, if there's somebody in the city that can facilitate this, because it's just the process of getting the firework contract in order and asking for the funds. So we don't, I think what had happened and why it says city of Grants is because it is a city of Grants event. It's not funded by the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, we'll have to clarify because either if we're signing off on this contract, then the thing that's going to need to be to this company...
That's fine. It doesn't matter to us. Like I said, it's just, from my understanding, over the last couple of years, it's just been a courtesy that we put together the event. But it's not, I don't want to say it doesn't benefit us, but we don't get anything other than facilitating the paperwork for the city to have the firework display.
So you're okay to rewrite the check to this?
Yeah.
Do you guys typically do anything out there? You set up your tent or...
Well, all of the other stuff that happens throughout the day is covered through lodgers' tax because it's potentially bringing outside people in.
So there won't be physical work at the city?
Other than if the mayor wants to come push the button to start the fireworks.
Did the village of Milan provide some money last year?
They did last year, but not this year.
How much?
$3,000. And then, what we'll do this year, it's the same. It's going to be tied into the radio station. And so, at the end of each promo for the radio station, it'll stay sponsored by the city of Grants and Sebola County. And it will be synchronized to, on the radio stations. And then, also Derek from the radio station is going to be doing a play-by-play of the parade. So he'll interview people before the floats go by, and then as the floats are going by, he's going to describe the floats and give a little feedback on them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And the next one, guys, we'll go through each one of these individually. The first line is what they were given in the past. The second line is what they requested this year. The third line is the recommendation from the lodgers' tax board. The first one is Sebola Chamber of Commerce, $142,500. What's up, Scott?
They showed up. They're pretty good.
Any questions on that one? Scott's there. I'll entertain a motion, whatever you guys want to do.
We want a motion, one at a time?
One at a time. We got to do each one of them individually.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We go with the recommendation, $142,500 for Sebola Chamber of Commerce.
Second. Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez? Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
Second one is the Mining Museum. The pass was 92,500. They requested 100 to 2,500, and the lodgers' tax board is recommending 92,500.
Mr. Mayor, I approve that we approve $92,500 for the Mexico Mining Museum.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez? Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
Next one is the Grants Rodeo Association. Take into account that the county did cut discounts, guys. $28,000 was what they got in the past. They requested 45. We gave them 33.
Can we make a motion? We go ahead with the 33,000.
I thought I had the... Go ahead, Matty. I have some... On that, on the $28,000, they added two more events. Since the county cut them $5,000, I would like to see if the city can add $5,000 to the 33,000.
To the 33,000? So we already gave them, we raised that 5,000. We give 33,000.
Okay, so I could say 5,000 to help them sponsor the industry events.
I second the 33,000.
The second to 33,000. We have a first and a second. Council Reynolds? We'll go on to 33,000.
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
I really wanted to up a 5,000.
Well, no.
No.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
33,000 it is.
So my understanding, Council Vasquez, was that we did have it from 28 to 33.
I understand that, but I'd like to see a little more money going to them because they, they hold it for a whole week. And a lot of times, they cut yourself really short. And then, they're cutting events and stuff like that, or cutting down on the price. That would be my reasoning for it.
We're going to have another award possibly in November, so that could be a time where any organization can come and request. We've not done that in the past, but we held a little money aside so that we could do some unexpected things. So I would recommend any that need additional funding come at that time.
Jamie, I saw you earlier. Are you here, Jamie?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, just keep us informed because the rodeo association does provide a lot of grocery seed stacks for the community.
A lot of lodgers' tax... Isn't it the effort to 40,000? Because last year, a mistake was made when we asked for 28,000. You should have asked for 33,000. But the paperwork is already in. We added two more big events coming in this year, and if we don't have the money, we've already got contracts for the final, the Northwest Finals are big. We're bringing our big rodeo here in our...
Yeah, well, just keep us informed. Like Laura said, we will have another award later this year.
Well, it's my understanding that the lodgers' tax board had recommended 40,000. Well, they recommended 33, Jamie. That was not the motion. That's what we got up here. Scott?
Scott? And wait, what was the request was?
We got... 45,000.
33. Or they got 28.
Well, they went up five, I think.
So they went from 28 to 30 to 33,000, right?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. That's what we ended up on.
Can you look at...
I'll have to look at my notes at home, but...
Yeah, but I was there at that meeting. I'm very... We just might have to revisit this before they come on the heavy show. You might just have to revisit this before they come on the heavy show. Especially if it's a bigger event. We're going to have two major events this year, but we have to get away from another source to the 2,000, $4,000.
Jamie, go ahead and revisit it before the...
Hang on. What do you got, Scott?
I think we're at 40.
We are.
Because now she just found it. It was...
It was 40? It was a recommendation from the board?
Yeah, it was five less than the asking what.
Okay, not five more, but five less than the asking price?
Right.
Right.
So it should be at 40.
At 40, right?
If Mike doesn't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem.
We need to rescind this.
Yes, so first, we'll make a motion to rescind the last vote, and then we'll resecond it. So make the motion to rescind the vote.
Okay, I make a motion. We rescind the last vote.
Second.
Second.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
Redo it for 40 grand for the rodeo association?
Make a motion for 40 grand.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
That'll work. 40 grand, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay. Mount Taylor Quadraflon, they received 33,000. They asked for 45,000, and they got 1,33,000 again. Is that right, Scott?
Do we still count on the agenda?
No.
They're doing it off of that list.
Oh, it stacks. That's fact.
It's different than the agenda. I saw what you saw.
It's good, but nothing great. Okay. Mount Taylor Quad, is there anybody out there for the quad? We know the quad brings people, guys. 33,000 is their recommendation for a tax board.
I make a motion to fund the Mount Taylor Quadraflon, 33,000, Molly?
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Vasquez?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Dues?
Yes.
The next one is the Main Street. Their pre-pass grant was 50,000. They asked for 60,000. The recommendation from the largest tax board is 15,600. Um, we've also put them on notice, 16 day notice on their contract. To redo their contract. Questions?
Can I ask why?
Why? Because they've done nothing. That's it. We killed, when we stopped the bike rally up here, Main Street's done nothing. Manny and them tried to get them to do something and they were overloaded to do nothing. So they chose to do nothing. They didn't do the field of honor. They didn't do the Easter A-Con. They've done nothing. And 12,000, 15,000 more than covers what they've done. And that's where I'm at with Main Street. Maybe eventually they can come up with something between now and November and they can come and revisit us for some more money. But right now, no. We gave them the concert series. They didn't even want to do that this year. Our own recreation department's doing that. And that's the way I feel about it. If they don't want to do it, I'm good with that. We'll do it ourselves. But we don't need to give them no money either. Okay?
Do you want to hear talking from Main Street?
No, we got.
You guys actually made a mind made up ready stuff.
I had mine made up. You bet I did Tom. Anything else? Anything from you guys? I'll entertain a motion for 15, 15, 6. And if not, it'll die due to lack of a motion and there won't be enough.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Main Street amount for 10,000 dollars.
10,000. Second?
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
No.
Councilor Vazquez?
No.
Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
And I vote yes to break the tie. Uranium Capital Speedway, they asked for nothing. Last year, they requested 14,000. And the largest tax board said to give them 14,000. Questions?
Josephine?
Racing's picking up guys.
Josephine, can you give us a little more about what's going on and what the 14,000 dollars is gonna be used for?
Uh, yes, we're gonna use a majority of it to promote more two-day shows, at least one a month. Uh, we have races from the beginning of April to the end of October this year, so it's 27 events plus the two-day shows. Uh, we're gonna use some of the money to help improve the safety of the track and increase our area so that we can have the bigger haulers and the bigger events come in.
How many years has it been there?
Forty-seven.
And never asked us for a dime?
Never asked for a dime.
Let's give us a nice one.
I make a motion. Give Uranium Capital Speedway 14,000 dollars.
Second? Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez? Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis? Next, whole arts council?
Thank you.
Pass grants is 6,000. They requested 13,000. The largest tax board recommended 8,000.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve for the Civil Arts Council 8,000 dollars.
Second? Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez? Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Yes.
Last but not least, the whole historical society. 4,000, 4,000, and they were recommended 4,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the 4,000.
Second? Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, voting yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Cool, those are done. Okay, these next two. Landscape and the maintenance contract. These are the numbers that you've got here in front of you guys, but we will not approve this until we actually have a contract. Okay, so go ahead Laura.
What I'm asking for is for you to approve notice of award that will go to CH2M Hill as they were the preferred vendor from the evaluation committee that we put together. Um, we had three landscape proposals and two water services. And the committee reviewed those and they were basing the criteria highly on qualifications. And so we would like for you to proceed with that, to approve a notice of award to CH2M Hill. And then we will work with them to negotiate the criteria for the contract.
And that contract, you guys should probably have it within 30 days of me my guess. And you'll see there, that's your, your committee that awarded it. The names are across the top there. And those are the, the weights that they scored each, each vendor with that approved these. Okay? But like I said, we will not finally approve this till we have a contract in front of us that we own. And of course we'll go into closed session.
And we need to approve each notice of award separately because they were separate RFPs.
So the first one will be to award the landscape and maintenance contract to CH2M2. Yeah, and all this is, is letting them know that they got the initial award that they contracted.
So.
Second? Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis? The second one is the wastewater treatment contract they were awarded. And it's the same thing. Once we get the final contract, we'll bring it back and we'll hold on to it.
Do you have a motion?
Second?
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez? Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Number seven. Welcome to the company. How are you Mario?
Fabulous mayor. How about yourself?
A lot better.
Good evening, air and council. The first topic is a little bit of background presentation on the area drainage. So give you a little bit of history. Back in 2010, the council of governments. Um, actually I've got Mano White with me. Would that have come on up?
I was waiting for his cue.
So I'll have to just kind of show you this, this one graphic. Back in 2010, the council of governments, in cooperation with the Army Corps of Engineers, Village of Milan, county, as well as the city.
So master drain plan, ain't it?
Sir?
Looks like a master drain plan, ain't it?
It is a master drain.
Thank you.
Yes. Here, some might need to really sort of look at a regional perspective of, of the flooding in the area. The shaded area on that drawing illustrates 100-year floodplain, so you can see that a large portion of the city is within the floodplain itself. That's important if you're a property owner or a business. Because it has an adverse impact on you in terms of flood insurance, things of that nature. Um, at that particular time, there was a, within the drainage master plan is, mayor, you're very familiar, so we'll, I'll have to hold this one up. The, several capital improvements were identified. George Haddish Bridge is one of those. There's two things that I want the, the council to just be aware. Number one is that a study identified that the Rio San Jose and the Grants of Oil were severely undersized. Okay, so you don't have enough capacity to maintain large storm events or confine them. That's, so it overtops and that's what creates a large footprint. So, so that's a no way, no good, right? Secondly is, is not only is the channel not large enough, but many other structures are undersized. So if you can imagine trying to push water through a straw, the water's gonna back up and it's gonna build an elevation, what we call a head. And that's what causes it to jump out. Other things such as lack of maintenance, maybe having too much sediment within the structures themselves will reduce the capacity of that structure. Again, adversity impacts the area. So that particular board there identifies some of the photos and the recommendations specific to the George Haddish Bridge. So finally, this, this last board here, you might want to also have the, turn it a little bit for the audience after the, the council season. Um, is one of the many drawings that is found in the master plan that identifies the design flows and the structure recommendation sizes. It should be noted that the study itself was vetted through the Army Corps of Engineers in the Albuquerque District who was a primary funding agency. They funded 50% of the study. Uh, and it was also certified by the San Francisco District. So we had a number of people that were really key to the study and we were the consultant that provided, provided the overall analysis and recommendations. Also want to point out that there was public meetings that were published. Public input was taken in, uh, so the public had an opportunity to comment on this. Uh, and from this, to date, we probably between Milan and Grants have built at least five or six structures in the last five or six years. So about a structure a year. Not very inexpensive structures as you can imagine. So, um, the, the next item that will come up for, for discussion here a little bit is gonna, is gonna present to you a design proposal that actually looks at a structure that's less than 100-year. And, and I, I kind of wanted to give you the background information of how this study came about, how it was vetted, how it was funded. So again, all of the structures in the studies recommend 100-year. That is a standard of care in our industry. I also want to point out that the Rio San Jose upstream, north of the Village of Milan, has been working with another consultant to essentially capture the upstream flows as well and be able to channel them through the Rio San Jose. Again, channeling, I mean, they, they, they keep it within the confines of the channel. Um, we recently bid out a project for the Village of Milan on the Rio, Rio San Jose where we're widening it. This was a coordination effort, not only with the Rio San Jose flood control district, but also with the Army Corps of Engineers. And the, the interest with the permitting agencies is to keep that as, as we make improvements downstream, we gotta make sure that everything fits together like a puzzle you are conveying the 100-year stream. Uh, so that, that, that is a background history. There's a lot of work that's gone into it. There's other, there's other people that have been in the works. Not only Wilson and Company, but other consultants that, that are working upstream, that are really counting on being able to continue to discharge downstream in future years. As you move forward, especially as you consider this next task, and I'll be, I'll be glad to talk about it and get to that item. Really, you're talking about a reduced flood control facility, a small structure, doesn't convey the 100-years. And it's, it just, I want you to be aware.
Hang on, hang on. Didn't we already approve the box culverts for that bridge?
Yes.
Okay, and they're the same size as the ones that are on the end of town?
They are.
Okay. Mario, anything on that? Right?
That's what we are, so that's what you're good at. And Mario wants, yeah.
So Mario, are you saying it's not gonna be sufficient?
It, it's not sufficient for the 100-year. It's a 10-year design. And when we were asked to provide a scope and a fee, we're obligated to be able to sort of inform of maybe some of the concerns. The consultants will design whatever the city wants. We just want you to be aware of what, what you're asking for. You're gonna design a structure that's undersized downstream. When we've already expended several dollars, not only the city and the village, but the upfront planning with the Rio San Jose upstream to be able to essentially dump more water 100-year storm into the channel, then we're gonna choke it downstream.
Okay, I wasn't here, but. You know, they designed those. Did somebody bring it up, says, you know, these aren't gonna be sufficient?
I did. And I said that we needed to go with the older dual one.
When I was. I wasn't here, but I'm, I'm just asking. It only makes common sense to say, you know, these ain't gonna be big enough. We're gonna be, we've been.
They were big enough because they're exact same size as the ones on the other end of town that were just put in 10 years ago, 12 years ago, okay?
Yes, sir.
The exact same size, the exact same thing that state put in on that end of town. That's why, basically, that's what I thought we recommended. Eddie, correct? They were the exact same size as the ones that are already down there that were put in, but then that's one of the newest bridges we have. Next to the Nimitz and the North Hills Bridge. Is that one the state put in. And that's why we recommended it because it was the exact same size as the one the state put in. So you're, you're telling me the state only planned for a 10-year flood?
I haven't reviewed the state's report, mayor, but I can tell you that those structures downstream are undersized. They are.
Because I, I know, I know living here my whole life, I've seen a couple of 50-year floods, okay? I've never seen 100-year flood. And especially since we've got the track on, we've started cleaning. Um, we're handling the flooding real good now. Of course, 100-year flood is a whole new walkie. But I've seen a couple of 20, 25-year floods just in the last five years.
Couple of years ago, we still.
Yeah.
Get to the top.
Right to the very top of the bridge.
So Paul, when we were out there with the Army Corps and looking at structures, weren't they, weren't, wasn't the DOT happy to work on that structure downstream? Didn't they have some issues from the flooding we had had just this last spring?
I know what we did there is we went in and we cleaned out that end channel because it was completely full of dirt. As the, the channel goes down and it turns to the left, it goes underneath, that end channel to the far east was completely full of dirt. And we took the track over there and we made a drainage in there. We took the little skidster in there and we pushed all that dirt out. And we opened, reopened it and we did it just before that flood came through and it saved our blood. And that one saved us, big time.
We approved the box.
The box culverts, the ones that.
And that's not 100-year flood either.
None of them are.
No, so, so one of the, one of the suggestions that, number one, I wanted to make sure that this council had the history so that you can make an informed decision. That's key. Uh, secondly, when we get to the next item, if this council chooses to approve it, what I would suggest, and again, we're only here to inform, is to look at what you approved scenario. Uh, and let me pause at this moment, just to kind of walk you through this estimate. This is, if you look at the top of the page, this is a structure comparison chart. Okay? Which is very different from a construction estimate. Structure comparisons chart, what it does is it looks at what kind of structure we're looking at. And then it strictly looks at the prices for the structures. Doesn't take into account, every structure's gonna have a different upstream and downstream intake head wall. It's gonna have some erosion control. It's gonna have some sort of embossion treatment. If it has piles versus a spread flooding, I mean, if the structure itself is gonna have different requirements, right? So I wanted to make sure that if you understood that this, this is just a structure comparison, not a construction estimate. So, again, I, I didn't want this council to maybe not be clear on that because the structure you're gonna pay for, it's gonna be more than the 200,000 that's there, I can guarantee that. When it gets designed. And I, I saw in the meeting minutes, because I did get a copy of them, the meeting minutes actually say 175,000.
Well, we're, we approved the second item, not the third. And you're saying 200,000. The, the total on the second item is 520,000.
175,000 didn't pass because it wasn't a second on it.
That's right. I do, due to lack of a second. Sure did.
We approved the box culverts.
But, and on the bottom of the page, it does talk about that, that that is just for structures, not for roadway, it's not for all of the costs.
That doesn't include any concrete over the top or any of that, right?
We wanted to make, yeah, right. It, we wanted to make that clear and, and Mario had a real concern about that. I wanted to make that clear because coming in with a bid for engineering and then coming back and presenting a cost to you that's gonna be 400,000 dollars rather than 200,000 dollars, you know? He wants to make that clear, that, that, that these estimates were just for the structures.
That there's no way that that thing's gonna cost us 200,000 dollars. And that it ain't never gonna happen. They're not.
And mayor and council, I, one thought.
You built too many of these things.
One, one thought that I had shared with the, with Mr. Pena is that you can really just get to a schematic analysis, go with your recommendation and model it. And then look and see what the difference would be on 100-year and be able to see the inundations, meaning how big is the floodplain. Bring that back. The technical numbers are the numbers. You can look at them. Not what you're aware of, of what you're moving forward with. And then at that point, decide if you really want to go with a smaller structure or a larger. And then you can get a good estimate at that point.
One of the concerns when we were out there, when Laura and I were out there with, with the state, was the flooding that was happening adjacent to the channel. And a big portion of that was because these floodwaters weren't being contained within the structure.
Yeah, because they hit that bridge, it go right over the top and spread out to the, to the north.
Yeah.
That's why we kept another side a little bit higher, so they wouldn't flow into Harries and everybody else's properties there. It would flood that plain out there. Yeah. So what are you asking for Mario?
Um, one, uh, two things. Number one, I wanted you guys to be aware, I'm not asking more sharing with you, but when you move forward with the next, um, the next item, if you choose to approve the contract for the smaller structure, um, maybe give staff direction that we come back at schematic design with the, with the real construction estimate, not a structure comparison estimate, a real cost estimate. And two inundation maps, your smaller structure and your bigger structure. Because the cost differences between the two, I don't think we're talking a significant difference in cost and this council should be aware of what you're paying for and what you're giving. So directing staff to make sure you come back, if you approve the contract, direct staff to come back at schematic with the Corps of Engineers estimate and a good inundation map. It tells you what the water, what, what the floodplain's gonna look like.
But downstream, after it goes through George Haddish, downstream, that, that bridge won't handle it.
It won't, it won't. And, and the discussion, it's, 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 it's practical. As you widen the channel, you naturally have more capacity. So you actually reduce the, what they call the base flood elevation, the effective base flood. Uh, but you've got several structures over the next 15 to 20 years that you've gotta replace. And then once the structures are in, you gotta come in and widen the entire channel.
You know, and actually, we don't have that many. We got Washington, we got Roosevelt, we got George Haddish. And Edelman Estates. Edelman, add Edelman, that's right.
Excellent.
So we got four left, man.
Well, and mayor, you've got a, you've got about two or three upstream with what we call, well, we call them attenuation ponds, right? That, that have to go in hand with that, that sort of reduce the flow.
Catches the water. Okay, so that's done with the presentation?
Yeah, that's discussion.
Okay. Um, the George Haddish design, what do you guys want to do with it? That's where you're looking at WH Pacific wants 170,000. Wilson wants 59.
I say go with Wilson.
Make that motion.
Thank you. Motion, go with Wilson.
Councilor Reynolds? Councilor Vazquez? Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
And mayor, for the record, do you want to state that, to come back at schematic with an estimate?
Yes.
And an inundation map?
Yes, please. Okay?
Thank you.
Budget amendment. Budget for Radio Street.
Okay, we have a, a budget adjustment for Radio Street. This was requested by the state just to bring our numbers back in line because there have been some changes in costs, not increases in costs, but they've changed the way they want to show them here. And so we're changing, we're changing, uh, the, the budget, the budget items. And, uh, we're adding 49, 60, 07 to the previous 15,000 for other professional services. These are monies that we, we have already expended and we just need to account for them.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We have the 4,000.
Just make it to approve the budget adjustment for Radio Street. Yeah, just, yeah, just. Budget amendment number two. Second?
I second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez? Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Taxes are beef proposal from Mr. Forrest Grant. Come on up, man. What's happening? How you doing? Come on up here. Good to see you again.
Good evening.
How's it coming?
Doing fine.
Good.
I didn't bring vanna.
Yeah, we, we know this.
I don't have any foam boards. So I, I had, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but if Mario can bring his van, I can bring on the plane. can bring his van, I can bring on the plane this guy. Mister, Mister Mayor, councilors, I'm Bob Paulet with Forestryman Associates, and I have been working diligently on the plans and specifications for the new wastewater treatment plant. These are basically them, with plans here, specifications down here, about twelve-hundred pages worth of design. That is complete, it has been submitted to NMED and has been almost approved. We have one last review by NMED on, on the instruction plans to go through. What you have in front of you right now is the next phase. It's approximately a year and a half to two and a half years worth of, worth of work that I will be doing, Forestryman Associates will be doing for the city of Grants. It includes bidding, construction management, inspection, startup, optimization, and additional work through the one year beyond the construction completion of the project. It includes demolition of your existing wastewater treatment plant, coordination of the new plant with the old plant, getting rid of the sludge that's included in there, and taking it and putting it to a dry condition so that you can landfill it. It is essentially taking care of everything else that you need to do for the wastewater treatment plant for the next twenty-five years. The project that we, we are proposing has been submitted to NMED for their review. They, anything that you do potentially tonight is still subject to their review and approval of that. However, I've worked closely, we have worked closely with NMED, and they are very aware of all the requirements, and we are following the requirements that they have. The schedule is about a year and a half worth of construction for the wastewater plant, that's seventy-seven weeks. It also includes seventy-two weeks of onsite full-time inspection by, with a Forestryman Associates person here in, in Grants. And it includes startup, optimization of the, of the facilities, and then monthly operations, evaluations for the twelfth, the year beyond the, the operation while you're operating. At the eleven-month evaluation, the NMED requires a, essentially, a, a look at the plant, is it doing what it's supposed to be doing? And that would be the finali, finalization. That would be in about 2018. So this is a, a long-term construction administration and startup, and working with y'all to make sure that you've got a plant that will last you for the next twenty-five years. The proposed fee is six-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. That is including twenty-two thousand dollars for the bidding, two-hundred thousand dollars for the construction management, four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars to have a person here full-time inspection, and fifty-eight thousand dollars with startup and optimization. You will find that on about page twenty-six, it's a spreadsheet. That is shown in the attachments in two parts, one lump sum and one time of materials. The inspector in his place will be at time of materials. If he needs to go longer, we, it'll, it'll have to go longer. But if it's a, if they can get it done quicker, then we don't charge you as much. That's pretty standard for the industry.
Is the contractor gonna move here? He's gonna be here in six years.
Yes, yes, he will be here for the seventy-seven, seventy-two weeks is what we assume. It's a seven, a year and a half contract for construction, and he, he will be here for the, that year, that year and a half, seventy-two weeks. It is utilizing a standard NMED contract, and Mister Mayor, I have original signatures here, they don't let me sign these big, big contracts, so I have original signatures that we can put with the original, if you want, if you so desire. And I would, that's about as much it is, as it is, and I would stand for questions by anybody.
Questions?
We've been working with you for the last couple of years, we appreciate what you guys have done, and we're ready to move forward.
I am too.
That's ten years, huh, Bob?
It's been a lot, it seems like, isn't it?
It's been ten years, Bob, since we started all this stuff. Matter of fact, guys, I'll entertain a motion if there's nothing more.
I'll make a motion, except for the seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, which includes the grocery receipt tax.
Seven-fourty-eight, four-seventy-seven, seventy-four.
Yeah. Make a motion.
I second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Think about it, pretty soon we won't be smelling that crap, no more.
And one last thing, listen, if I could, just allow you to let you know that there are other components of, of the wastewater system that we are continuing to work with, that the EID, the Environmental Information Document, was something that we started about a year ago, and it has come to a culmination, but when we went to the final product, there was an objection by the FLOA of Akama. That has not yet been resolved from NME, by NMED.
We've got good feelings on that, though.
Yes. The groundwater permit renewal for your system that you have right now is in process, it has been reevaluated, and, and we addressed their comments, and it is probably at a point where it will be finalized very quickly. However, that Akama thing is still looming over, over the process. And the, the plans and specs have not yet been totally reviewed and approved, but they have also said, we are gonna have to wait and, and get this Akama issue resolved before we do anything more. So that may delay the advertisement and bidding, the process that we would have with this construction management contract.
And initially, we were supposed to start July one, and we got an extension to October because of this process, yes.
Thank you for...
Thank you. That was very informative.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
You answer all the questions with your presentation?
Well, I'm not a vanna. Well, I know the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, take this one, so I don't stick my foot in my mouth.
Which one? You can't raise your right hand.
I'm telling you.
We have a pending lawsuit related to the Mount Taylor subdivision. As a part of an earlier settlement agreement in 2009, the city was to build a passive drain system in the subdivision to help drain off standing water. The claimant believes they sustained further damage to their property because the passive drain was not built in a timely manner. A four-day jury trial is set for July on this case. We were mandated to try to reach a settlement out of court prior to trial. I participated in a full-day mediation with the other party this past week. The advice of counsel and the mediating judge is that we settle out of court. We reached an agreement of fifty-five thousand pending counsel approval. For our attorneys to prepare for this trial in July, we are looking at at least fifty thousand in attorney fees and another twenty thousand in expert witness fees. My recommendation is that we settle out of court for the fifty-five thousand with a guaranteed release of any further damages.
Mister Mayor, I believe that we approved the fifty-five thousand dollar settlement.
Second. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
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 Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Next one is playground equipment, you guys could see it there. It's for San Jose Park, this is what the youth guys will be putting in for us.
This one is the youth conservation core projects, and I picked equipment that youth could install at their high school and college age, and we have not done anything in that area for quite some time, and so we were recommending that we put some playground equipment in that park for that neighborhood.
What about, what's gonna be on the substrate? What are you gonna put on the ground?
Um, we won't...
Bars?
Right, we'll have some kind of wood chips, so, yeah.
And on that note, Matt Allen, right out here, has it. There's no need to...
Chip it in?
Yes, there's no need to go anywhere. I spent three hours out there today with him on how we can expand that operation and get going on Mount Taylor. And of course, we'll have that discussion here on the twenty-eighth, if anybody wants to show up for that meeting, with the Forest Service and Mister Pierce's office. So yes, we can get that stuff right here, we don't have to bring it in no more. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the thirty-one thousand, thirty dollars and ninety-five cents for playground equipment.
Second.
Second?
Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Vazquez?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
The next page you're looking at, these are the budget considerations that we were talking about last time, and as we finalize our budget, budget tab, you basically need to know what we're gonna do with these, and...
The other ten was for Fire Night's Bike Rally, for operations or administrative costs. So the program budget is forty thousand. The MOU that the city did sign off on is letting you all know that you agreed to paying that forty thousand, and that's based off of the estimated population of the city of Grants and the downtown area, so that, you know, the, the minimum is forty thousand and forty-five.
That doesn't matter, okay?
Okay, but I'm just saying, you know, you guys signed off on a three-year contract last year, Laura came to us at May...
We just showed a sixty-day notice now that we're reviewing that contract.
Okay.
Once we've done that, if we're ready to deal with you, then we'll call you back and go deal with it.
Okay, but I just wanna mention one thing, the ten thousand that you did mention was for the lodger's tax. So we are asking for the forty.
Okay, just so we, we can use the ten thousand for our operating expenses, because that's larger. Just real quickly, not being disrespectful or nothing, but just consider what Main Street does do, I know you just, you'd like to mention that we do nothing, but we did have our annual meeting last week, and Councilman Reynolds was the only one that showed up to it after everybody's invited, and the, they came down from the state and they explained what we actually do do. So it would be nice if people at least show up and listen to explanations of what we do before we start saying we don't do anything. And, and keep Main Street, I think we really need it.
Would it be nice if you do what, what we requested, okay, instead of just doing whatever you wanted, okay? That's it, we're, we're not discussing this no more.
That's fine, we don't work for the city, though. That's the reason we have different organizations, so we don't have one person with their thumb on top of somebody.
You voted to do nothing.
We didn't vote to do nothing. We're doing economic...
You voted to do nothing.
For the bike rally. We do a lot more besides events for you guys. That's fine.
Well, I mean, if Counselor Vazquez, you've been on Main Street for how long? If you can explain the four points approach, we're not about events, we're about economic development. Okay, well, I just wanna know, where do we stand when it comes to economic development?
If we've all reviewed it, we'll get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are you gonna give me some recommendations on these?
The last one is the Sebola Transit. Marcella asked for fifty-two thousand. That one's on you guys, the way I feel about that is that we could do it with our senior for fifty thousand, and that's why I'd rather see that money go, everybody knows how I feel about the transit. If you wanna fund it for fifty-two, it's up to you guys. The Sebola Economic Development Foundation, the recommendation for that one was twenty grand. Right? Comments, questions?
These items will be voiding on the payment.
Yes, well, we're, you have her the guidance, she wants the guidance, guys, and those are my recommendations.
Okay.
We wait on that, on Main Street, until we review their contract and see what we're gonna do with that, okay?
But this is an action item for...
Yes, this, this is an action item for the, for the budget resolution, so that we can have the final budget ready at our next meeting.
I think it's important to let these agencies know what we're gonna fund, so they can do their budgets and know what's coming out.
So, so, for, for us, for Sebola Transit, it, it, you're saying fifty-two thousand?
Yes, Marcella can work with fifty-two thousand. Right, Marcella?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, for economic development?
Twenty thousand is my recommendation.
And I would really like to, for us to match what the county given them.
I would too.
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand.
Yes.
And Grants Main Street here, like mixing them?
We'll wait until we have an actual contract with something in it that's legitimate, and they can come back in November and ask for more funding, we can review that later, once we have a contract.
I did, I did put in your packet the proposed contract that they submitted to me this week, that is behind your backup there, and it talks about the things that they're proposing to do for that forty thousand.
What's your recommendation?
Uh, I agree, I don't see much substantial in what Main Street's recommending that they're gonna do. I don't think, you know, we gave them the opportunity to do the, the concerts in the park, I let them know that definitely the council wanted that, and you had emailed on June first and asked if they had a lineup, and nothing was done, and it said, well, everything's up in the air, but I had already told them we wanted to do that for sure, so at that late a date, I felt like we should take that over. So I've not seen any indication that they're willing to start doing some of the stuff that they say they're gonna do.
On their behalf, on Grants Main Street behalf, I can say that they're working hard to get, to work with the Forest Service, and they're trying to get any event going next year.
But you see, Manny, that's not gonna happen, because we gotta go through the whole Forest Service Travel Management Plan and all that good stuff all over again, and we're barely starting that process now, and that process is gonna take another two or three years. And all of us that have been involved in this stuff, with the landscaping team and every, I mean, it takes ten years to get anything. So you're looking, if they want a Jeep Jamboree or something like that, it's more than a year down the road. It's at least until we get done with the travel management plan. And, and right now, the Forest Service, with, with what they're doing with the archaeological studies and everything else, they're telling us it's three years out. Am I right, Ronnie?
Start the travel management to consider in January.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and...
I'd rather see something happen.
Exactly, you know, and that's why we brought up bicycle racing, run racing, something, car shows all going in conjunction, and all we got was, no, we're not gonna do it. They didn't do the field that wanted the city to go. They didn't do the Easter eggs. They didn't...
They, they passed the farmer's market on back to the family center, and I felt like the farmer's market was something that truly was a continuous thing downtown, that was really easy to manage, because the people who'd come, that are regular vendors, helped manage it. They turned that back to the family center, and I think that should be something Main Street was a perfect activity for them to revitalize downtown.
I'll make a motion, we revisit this in November.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Reynolds?
Revisit everything?
No, just the Grants Main Street, just the Main Street.
You're talking just Main Street?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
What's the motion?
To revisit Main Street in November, when we're gonna do this.
So they're not getting any funding?
See, yeah, and this is what I'm saying, we don't even have to wait till November. We'll review their contract, and if there's something in there that we want to deal with, then we'll call them in and we'll review it. Until then, I mean, it's, to me, it's a no, guys. And in all actuality, that ten thousand we gave them for the, for that, we should give that to the rodeo association and to the, to the quadrathlon, they're the ones that actually bring people in here and do stuff, you know? I mean, since we killed the bike rally, guys, and there's no other way to put it, Main Street was the bike rally, that's all they were. I mean, Laura's the one that did the, all the, all the grants and everything they've gotten, Laura's right in. We've got our own marketing team now, we've got our own recreation team, we've got everything we need to do all this stuff ourselves, and that's what we need to do. And the motion will just, is to zero.
Can I just give them a comment?
No, can't, no.
The grants that we got...
You've already spoke.
Will be in jeopardy if you do away with Main Street.
That's okay.
Ninety-five thousand add fifty thousand dollars will be jeopardy.
That's okay.
And we're not doing anything.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And he voted no.
I voted no.
Okay. Okay, for the Economic Development Foundation, the motion?
I make the motion to fund them to forty-four thousand dollars.
I second.
Second, for forty-four thousand. Counselor Reynolds?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez? Counsel Vasquez? Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Counsel Dickens?
Yes.
Yes. 44 grand to the Economic Development Foundation and the Sebola Transit. This one, guys, what do you want to do with it? She needs 52,000. You know how I feel. Whatever you guys want to do with it, I'm good, okay? And remember, remember that this also affects a layoff, okay? This decision here will put somebody out. Okay? So I'll entertain a motion, whatever the council feels.
I got some questions. Eddie, he sat on that board?
Eddie and Laura. Since Art passed away, we haven't had him.
Sebola took her over.
Okay, so I just want to know what you thought of, what you guys thought about it, since she sat there, and what direction you would like to do, or we go on? Laura?
I, I think we really need to work on the management of the whole system, and I know, I asked Marcella, once Mr. Archunday passed away, if we were gonna, if they were gonna post a position, and it looks like she's selecting someone possibly from within, and I feel like the council, we pay for that program too. I don't feel like it should be her decision alone. I feel like we should be a part of that decision in picking a new director, and I think we really need to work to get somebody who's qualified, you know, and that's not always easy, and I don't know if that's part of how she, you know, absorbs some of the cost. I'm not sure that might be, and I think we need to...
You betcha.
No, I actually, until such time as we decide how we're gonna feel it, I had someone step up and say he would try. And he knows that that's a temporary thing, and if he can cut it and prove himself, that's great, but it's still a board decision. Just so you know that.
And the city does have four members.
I don't know much of how that would handle, so that's why I'm asking you that sat there. It's like this, we can get some real good information which way to go on. And if we're gonna be involved in picking a new director for the transit, do you would like to see us work with them?
I'd like the press to be involved if we're gonna do that. The mayor has a second option to take that money and put it at the seniors' center where we add for transportation for our seniors. And we did talk with our director out there, and she was receptive to adding an additional staff or two to do that. That's another option. She already has the people.
Yeah, we got the vehicles, and we can absorb them. I mean, we can give them some more if we have to.
Can the Sebola Transit just run in, in the lot and service those people? Is that what happened, what would happen?
If we cut the funding, it shuts down, doesn't it? Okay, that's, that's the alternative, guys.
And it took a lot of time and effort just to build the transit. We'll never get it back.
Was the, was the government or the state...
How much did the state cut?
The, the state wasn't gonna cut. They went down to what you, what...
What we went down to, okay.
The state was not cutting at all. They would've, they would've cut it.
Okay. How would they up that when they were cutting everything else? That doesn't make any sense.
They have been, they...
They're the ones that sent us mammals to cut all of this stuff that we're at. Okay, motion, guys, whatever you want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Sebola Transit amount of 52,000.
Second?
Second.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez? Counsel Dickens?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
Cool. There you, there's your direction, right? Okay.
Any idea what you're gonna be doing interviewing Marcella?
Excuse me?
Any idea what you're gonna be doing interviewing?
I have no idea. Right now, I'm just trying to get the backlog and paperwork, and the billing's done, so we'll have a board meeting before I do that. That'll tell you.
Sure. Thank you, Marcella. Okay, the next ones, these are all resolutions that, well, the first, the first one needs to be passed every year, and so does number 16, and these gotta be passed individually. So the first one is the Open Meetings Act. Any questions on that? We're gonna stay on Monday nights, right? Everybody's good with Monday nights?
Yeah.
6 o'clock, okay? Okay? So I'll entertain a motion.
Pass resolution number 16-1520.
Second?
Second.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez? Counsel Dickens?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
The next one is a zoning map change. Laura, you want to pick that one?
Um, I guess Mr. Windhorster, nobody's here.
Robert, come on up here.
Do you want to talk about that zoning?
Let me try to hide back there, man.
I did my best. Mr. Mayor, the city council, city manager, this, our comprehensive city plan was put into place September 11th, 2012. And I believe we hired a company to, to help with that process. Think we paid them about $50,000 to set up the zoning in our city. Well, we, we happened to come across something a few months ago when a resident wanted to sell some property in the Lobo Canyon area for a particular purpose.
Zuni Canyon area, right?
Pardon me?
Zuni Canyon area?
Zuni Canyon. Would that say Lobo Canyon?
Yes.
Absolutely. Anyways, but, but that purpose could not, the property could not be sold for that purpose in which the buyer wanted to purchase it for, because the zoning was wrong. And so what we did was, we went through, we researched everything, we, uh, let's see, we sent out, there were 25 properties, and they should have been zoned all along agriculture, residential, because there's a lot of farming-type properties out there, horses, cows, suction, and, and, and the way the properties were zoned, you couldn't do those things legally. If they sold it to someone else, they would not be able to build a house. And so in researching this, we, we decided that according to the law and the way the ordinance is read, that the best thing to do would be to turn these 25 properties into agriculture residential.
And they're what now?
Um, well, there are a number of things.
Makes different...
Yeah, there, there was special use, general, commercial, and mixed residential. And this way, everyone's going to have what they need. And, and so what we did was, we sent out 25 letters to all the different residents in the area that their property was involved. We also posted, posted each property with, with the notice that we planned on doing this.
We were going to have a hearing.
That hearing did happen. We put a, we put an ad in the paper also Friday, May 13th, and notices were placed on the properties on Friday, May 13th. I know because I did them myself. And 25 letters were sent to the property owners to rezone. 44 letters were sent to neighbors around the 25 property owners. And, and we had a hearing. There will be no change in the property taxes, and we had, we had nobody come out against us. After we had the hearing, everyone was in favor of it.
Uh, but they said it makes sense.
And so it is the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee that, that we, that the city council approves the change of this zoning to make it agricultural residential.
Questions?
So homes can still be built there?
Oh, yes.
Motion? My question, we'll issue ordinance 16-1213.
Second.
Second.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez? Counsel Dickens?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis? Thank you. The next one is the Uniform Code, Traffic Code. This is one that we renew every year. Any questions on it? We have to pass this one in order to pass the next one.
I'll make a motion we approve ordinance number 16-1215.
Second?
Second.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Counsel Dickens?
Yes.
Counsel Lewis?
Yes.
And the last one. Eddie, this ought to make you happy, maybe it finally happened.
Make me and a lot of people happy.
A whole lot of people in this town happy. Any questions on this one? This is, recreational vehicles allowed on our streets. Four-wheelers and all that good stuff. Number on it is 1214.
161214. I'll make a motion we approve ordinance number 161214.
Second?
Second.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez? Counsel Dickens?
Yes. Counsel Lewis? I wish the police would issue citations to these kids driving around, kind of racing without, without helmets. And the new law that was passed in New Mexico requires anybody under 18 wears a helmet. And we got a couple of kids killed in this town on these things, and they should receive citations when, when they're found to not be wearing helmets.
I wholeheartedly agree. Comments from the council? We'll go in reverse tonight. Mike?
Um, I got, I got a couple. Remember we just talked about zoning change for the Zuni Canyon Road area? We should be working on this, zoning change for where the greenhouses, that should be an agriculture area too, and it might help these guys with taxes. I don't know if it does or not, but it should be an agricultural area.
I agree.
Residents have to, just like what we changed, it wouldn't change anything if people that wanted to build a house or anything like that, but, but it would make the land their city, so it would correct it.
But I would like, well, they did get the pump coming in this week.
I saw it, yeah.
Yes.
How about the pump underneath this bridge there?
Uh, we've been working on that, and it's functioning, and we cleaned out the drains, and we cleaned out the ditch.
Cool. Any comments or...
No, go ahead. At the pond, there, a few months ago, the aeration that was being pumped into that water was much bigger, you know, a lot of bubbles coming out, and now it's not, and we've had fish dying in there. And so I'm wondering what has changed, you know? Edward, you're here, right? Has it even changed with that aeration system?
Oh, was it that new pump going Friday? So that's when I had more of the, the pump, so it's just, it's working out there.
Okay. So that pump does affect the aeration?
Uh, besides, you know, the aerator of the pump?
Yeah.
Not my fault.
Yeah, it just seems like it has changed, and then also, we've been seeing fish dying there.
Yeah, and it, and I actually probably, because the pump wasn't going, but we had to, we're not going to try to, to build a pump, and that's going to do a lot better.
So I'll work with them, I will see if we need to increase that aeration.
Yeah. Okay, and then also, we were up at Mirrorball Park this week looking at that playground, and that playground really needs some attention. Most of the attention it needs is just some of the wood chips that we were just talking about, and also a good paint job. And then maybe if we, if we provided one small addition to it of the plastic slides, because their slide is from 40 years ago, and it's metal, and those kids came to get on that slide. So just take, we don't need a $30,000 piece, but just some kind of small plastic with the slide, and then, and then a good paint job on that. We, we already have paint that we were using on this arch out here. It's gloss, we have the primary colors, yellow, orange, green, yellow, you know, it'd make that part look a lot better.
Okay.
And possibly some fence work, right? Yes, defense work, and how about some wood chip, I mean, the playground, wood chips? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That would, that would really help it.
Anything else? Eddie?
I don't know if I thank you, Robert, but thank you for getting that mess cleaned up on the gunnison. Casey's listening out there somewhere, I want to thank the county manager, Laura, for getting those trees trimmed there in Roosevelt. It was a good cause, an accident coming out of that intersection in Roosevelt. Is there any way, like, every three months, I mean, not all in mass, you know, scheduling in to hear from each board, you know, from groups that we find, to update us on what's going on?
That's why, that's why we have board members that sit on just one of those boards, so that he can give us an update, and Mike can give us an update from the COG. He can give us one from that, she can give us one from the personnel board, I can give you one from the transit board, from the Sullivan's Authority Board, what are you talking about after that?
Which they put...
We're all, we're all on the boards, okay?
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
They put requirements in the contract that they come every six months either.
And I think, I think that...
Periodically.
That you, as a council member, should give that report back to us. That's what I feel about, that's why you sit on the board.
I'm sitting there, we're being...
I understand that. I mean, you know, I understand that. I mean, just like Mike on the COG, I'm on the COG, I'm on the Sullivan's Authority, we bring those things back and tell you what's going on. And that's, that's what I expect of you guys.
The ask is, is there any way we could get some kind of funding to advertise all our area churches, because we have some historical churches in our area, and we have a few ghost towns within the area. Advertise those, or develop any tourists.
We can't, because they're a private, they're a private entity, so we can't put public money on advertising them, a private organization.
Separation, church to state, yeah.
But what we could do, I think, there should be something that we can do, we talk into the department, we have to draw them in for the historic.
You know, besides just the, we could probably market them that way, historic, because I know Santa Fe Market's there, the cathedral, it's a historic site, in that respect, we could, yes. Okay, yes.
Anything else? Manny?
Yes, this is for Paul. I've been sitting here for a while, listening to Waterline's break, Edward, and everybody's... What I want to bring up, and I want to bring a blueprint of our city sewer lines, our water lines, and actually make a blueprint of it, where they're all at, and...
They're all in Edward's head, man.
No, no, we, we need to put it on a computer system, because the city owns it, and you always have to get Edward up at 2:00 in the morning, find out where the water leak is at.
We're not doing the shut-off out there.
If we, if we can implement...
The city currently doesn't have a department for that. Really?
I could work with CH2 Hill, and we can get somebody to help us put that together.
But we can plan out, or we can blueprint the whole city where everything is at?
We'll get it done.
We can get it done. But will the city own it, instead of you and Howard?
Yes, and we own everything they do anyway. We own their trucks, we own everything they do.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to see that.
Yeah, we own everything, anything else.
Edward's like...
Edward says they even have them.
Yeah.
Counsel Reynolds?
I haven't seen any mosquitoes.
Ain't that wonderful?
I am, so I've been checking my house, or, or I've done the, you know, zero scapeing and don't want too much green and water, but I haven't seen any mosquitoes.
What it is, is that...
Is this true?
Yes, it is that company that we've got doing it.